Order from John Luthman, Casey, please.
Dear Lord, help this council make great decisions for this issue. May all our citizens be able to benefit in our decisions. Be with our policemen, our firemen, and keep them safe. Be with our city workers, keeping them safe. In your name we pray.
I pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. To a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Counsel has a copy of the agenda. Would entertain a motion?
Mayor, if I could, can I make a request? And you can do it either before adopting the agenda or after we get into the meeting. But I'd like to table under new business items A and B. We've got a procedural issue that council suggested we take these back to the planning commission and have another vote to make the property zone RA.
Why don't we leave it there? Can you just explain? And then we'll talk about it. And then we'll have some continuity.
Could we add something for David Hall to discuss the water withdrawal letter he received today?
What about item J? David Hall, Jim Looney, water.
Groundwater withdrawal permit increase.
Okay, groundwater withdrawal increase. Permit increase?
Yes.
Counsel, item J and items that Mr. Looney just mentioned, A and B, remain there with an explanation as to why we want to take them. Okay? With those changes, would entertain a motion?
We'll make a motion. We'll accept the agenda with the changes.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Being an offer of what was shown hands, to the council. Lonnie, give us some air, please. You just got here. And sit real close to it. Item five, three minutes on September 5th, regular meeting and September 26th, town hall meeting. Lisa?
Wednesday, September 5th, 2018. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order promptly at 6:00 p.m. He requested John Fouse give the invocation. He requested council members, Sunny Proctor lead the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. City manager Jim Looney stated that he would like to add to item F under new business that council consider a four-way stop at Old Philadelphia and Confederate Lane. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to approve the agenda with the change. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. City clerk Lisa Hall read the minutes of the August 6th, 2018, regular meeting. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to adopt the minutes. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Ms. Hall read the minutes of the August 30th, 2018, call meeting. Councilmember Ann Snady made a motion to adopt the minutes. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Jim Looney to give an update on the Richards Street property donation. Mr. Looney stated that it had been determined by the city attorney that in order to change the title over to the city, it would cost $2,500 in legal fees. Mr. Looney recommended that due to the legal fees and the fact that the property was very small, the city not accept the donation. Councilmember Ann Snady made a motion that the city not accept the donation. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item B under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney who stated that Jasper Enterprises, Inc. had withdrawn their application for an alcohol license. No action necessary. Item A under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Carlo De Pizzo, owner of Wingsology, to request permission for outdoor alcohol sales Saturday, October 6th, for Marble Festival. He stated that council had approved the outdoor sales last year. He stated that he would block off half of Stegall Street as he did last year so that the trolley could run. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to approve the outdoor sales on Saturday, October 6th. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made such motion. Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item B under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Kayla Westbrook of Luxe Mitigation and Planning. She stated she was here to represent Pickens County Emergency Management Agency and to present to council the Pickens County hazard mitigation plan updated every five years. She read a resolution that the city needed to adopt in order to approve the plan. She stated that there had been six meetings in the process of updating the plan. Discussion with council followed. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to approve the resolution as read. Councilmember Ann Snady made such motion. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimously. Item C under new business, Mayor Weaver called upon Jim Looney and Water Service Superintendent David Hall to present to council the need to continue negotiations with Pickens County regarding the water line that the city plans to run to the county's planned water treatment plant at Grandview Lake. Mr. Looney stated that a letter had been received from the county requesting a commitment from the city to run the water line. Discussion followed. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Sunny Proctor made a motion to allow Jim Looney, David Hall, and Mayor Weaver to negotiate with the county in good faith to run the line in order to maximize the citizens of Jasper's benefit. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item D under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Jim Looney and David Hall to present the watershed protection plan for the city of Jasper, Georgia, dated June 2018. Mr. Hall stated that by approving this plan, the city is agreeing to test all water that is leading the city. Not only wastewater plant water release, but the city will be responsible for all water leading the city when the plan is implemented. He also stated that this plan is a requirement for the wastewater plant expansion permia. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion that he be allowed to approve the watershed protection plan and assign all documents necessary in that approval. Councilmember Tony Fountain made such motion. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion carried unanimously. Item A under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Jim Looney to present to council the need for a replacement engine for the jetter truck in the amount of $11,700. Mr. Looney stated that he had contacted council earlier in the month to get permission for this emergency repair. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Ann Snady made a motion to approve the replacement motor at a cost of $11,700. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item F under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present to council his recommendation for a no-left-turn sign at the intersection of Mark Woodfield Street and Highway 53. Councilmember John Fouse made a motion to approve the sign. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Mayor Weaver stated that traffic could still cross Highway 53 onto the street across from Mark Woodfield Street. Councilmember John Fouse suggested that the sign state "Right turn only" rather than "No left turn" in order to stop traffic from crossing the intersection. The motion was changed to approve a right-turn-only sign at the intersection by John Fouse, and Ann Snady seconded. Motion carried unanimously. Item F1 added under new business, Mr. Looney stated that he had a request from some business owners that the city put a four-way stop at the intersection of Old Philadelphia Road and Confederate Road. Discussion followed. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to table the decision until the next regular meeting to give council an opportunity to look at the intersection. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item G under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present to council proposals from two sanitation service contractors to replace the city sanitation department. Mr. Looney also stated that he had included for councils to review the city's current customer profile as well as rates. Mr. Looney stated that he recommends having a public hearing to obtain citizens' input before making any changes to the city's current garbage service. Discussion followed. Councilmember John Fouse stated that he would like to have the hearing the day before the work session next month so that council could discuss the issue at the work session. Mayor Weaver recommended having a public hearing on the same night as the work session prior to the work session. Councilmember John Fouse made a motion to advertise and hold a public hearing to discuss the future of the city's sanitation services on Wednesday, September 26th. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item H under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present the need for a committee to put together a law ordinance. Mayor Weaver stated that he appoints councilmembers John Fouse and Ann Snady to serve on that committee due to their interest in a law ordinance. Item I under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present the need for a committee to put together a metal building ordinance. Mayor Weaver stated that he appoints councilmembers John Fouse and Ann Snady to serve on that committee due to the fact that the ordinances are related subjects. Item J under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present to council a proposal on two dog runs at the Jasper City Park. Mr. Looney stated that the cost for both a 228-foot run and a 270-foot run will be $8,577. Discussion followed. Finance Director Lisa Hall stated that the project was not in the budget. City manager Jim Looney stated that the city could use money budgeted for other park projects. Councilmember Tony Fountain voiced concern that no citizen had approached him asking for a dog run. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made a motion to approve the dog runs at a cost of $8,577. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Motion carried by four votes. Councilmember Tony Fountain was voted against. Item K under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to present the first reading of the city's pet ordinance. Following the reading, councilmember John Fouse made a motion to approve this as the first reading of the ordinance. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion carried unanimously. Item L under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Looney to discuss a request from David Shouse that the city take ownership of Ralph Hicks Circle. He stated the street was curbed and was within the city's street standards. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion that the city take ownership of Ralph Hicks Circle. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. I've got little item, I should be item, you know, under new business. Finance Director Lisa Hall recommended to council the proposed millage rate. Ms. Hall stated that all of the city's property values experienced a decrease in inflationary growth. There had been growth in the digest. She is asking permission to advertise the proposed millage rate at the same rate as the previous year at 4.655 mills. Mayor Weaver called for a motion to advertise the millage rate at 4.655. Councilmember Ann Snady made such motion. Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion passed unanimously. Finance Director Lisa Hall gave a financial report for the month of August 2018. Chief Greg Lowen gave a report of police activities for the month of August 2018. Chief Steve Roper gave a report of fire activities for the month of August 2018. Councilmember John Fouse gave a report on JYSI. Benote Business Committee, Councilmember, we were asked for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Ann Saib made a motion to adjourn. Council scheduled to go away next. If the regular council meeting will be held October 1st, 2018. And I need to change that to the town hall meeting held on September 26th. I'd like that changed.
With that, would entertain a motion?
Make a motion, accept the minutes with the changes?
Motion to approve the minutes with minor changes, he just referenced it. Is it second? Motion second, discussion. Being an offer of what was shown hands? Thank you. Okay, I think next is the September 26th town hall meeting?
Wednesday, September 26th, 2018. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order promptly at 6:00 p.m. He requested councilmember John Fouse give the invocation. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield led the recital of the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that it be noted that councilmember Tony Fountain is absent. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember Ann Snady made a motion to approve the agenda as presented, and councilmember John Fouse seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver recognized city manager Jim Looney to present financial information regarding the city's sanitation service. Following Mr. Looney's presentation, the floor was open to the public for comments and questions regarding the city's sanitation service. There were several comments and concerns expressed by the citizens and business owners of the city of Jasper. All who commented were in favor of the city keeping the sanitation the same as present. It was asked of one citizen how the money saved from outsourcing the service would be utilized. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield stated that he felt that there was no better way to spend the money saved by outsourcing the sanitation service than to spend and invest in public safety. He stated that he is all about transparency and there are no cameras in the patrol car. He stated that all officers did not have bulletproof vests. He stated that the fire department needs equipment. He stated that he felt our public safety was lacking. Mr. Looney recognized the mayor and council for comment. All council thanked the citizens for their attendance and comments. Mayor Weaver made a short statement explaining how and why the city sanitation service came into existence. Mayor Weaver recognized city employees for comments about the city sanitation service. Being no other business to come before council, Mayor Weaver adjourned the meeting.
Motion?
Equipment, public safety lacking. If we can add the word "equipment" after "public safety", it's the equipment that's lacking in our public safety. I should make sure that's on the record.
I guess if you would just add that, he would want to clarify what he was trying to say.
How to save the equipment?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I will make that point.
Thank you.
No, make that addition. I think you've got to get that off of what he actually said. He said what he meant to say was not lacking equipment. That's all it is. I think that would be a good change for him. A good addition or put up.
That's fine. Thank you.
With that, would entertain a motion? Did we cut out the motion?
Yes. Make a motion with that, with this slight change.
Got another second discussion? Being an offer of what was shown hands? Thank you, counsel. You told me you were up for that. You weren't here?
I wasn't.
You weren't here, okay, sorry. Okay, old business. Item A, sanitation service update, Jim? We talked about this. What we did, we talked about this in our work session, but we get it on the record.
I see.
While we have that here, not even though it might not need any action.
After the meeting on the 26th, which was a good meeting, well-attended, good exchange of ideas. There was suggested at the work session the night, the next night, that I get a group together and talk about ways to improve service, lower costs, evaluate rates, and possibly grow the business. So I've asked Jimmy Howard and Rachel to work with me on that. Both have agreed, and the intent is to get that started tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Item B, pet ordinance, second reading?
Phil, does ordinance reading have to be by the city attorney? And that was a question asked by me the other day. I just wondered if the inflection of the voice by someone turning at it be used or not. All right, for consideration, additional wording to the current animal ordinance. Cruelty to animals. It should be unlawful for any person to cause to death or unjustifiable physical pain or suffering of any animal, regardless of whether or not said animal was domesticated or not by act and omission or because of willful neglect. This section shall include, but is not limited to, the following examples of cruelty. One, the owner's failure to provide adequate medical care, food, water, and/or humane care for any domesticated animal. Two, the use of caustic, flammable, boiling, or heated substances on any domesticated animal. And three, leaving an animal unattended in a parked vehicle without proper ventilation. Nothing contained herein shall prohibit a person from killing or injuring an animal in the defense of his or her person or property or the person or property of another, including, not limited to, killing a domesticated animal causing injury or damage to livestock or poultry. Nothing contained herein shall prohibit a person from humanely killing an animal which is severely sick or injured. Method used for killing or injuring the animal shall be designed to be as humane as possible under the circumstances. Person who mainly kills or injures animal under the circumstances described herein shall incur no liability for the death or injury of said animal. Right of entry, an officer charged the responsibility of enforcing this chapter may use any force necessary to remove any animal confined in a closed vehicle when ambient temperature is 70 degrees Fahrenheit or above outside the vehicle. If the vehicle is damaged during such removal, neither the city nor officer attempting the removal of said animal shall be held liable for the damage of the vehicle or its contents. That is the second reading of the Cruelty to Animals ordinance. And as we discussed at September 5th meeting, this was requested by both police officers and animal control officers.
I didn't hear any reference to any municipal codes, numbers, or anything. How we want to, will we get this?
I think that's added by the code company.
Yeah, it would be easier if they were in there, but I think they can do that.
Just reference that for the minutes that we will let Municho decide where it will go. Do you get any input on that? With that, would entertain a motion? Motion to approve? Motion is second, discussion. Being an offer of what was shown hands? Thank you, counsel. Item C, millage rates, Lisa?
In your packet. I put a copy of the PG-32. It's a form that is issued by the state to calculate the millage rate rollback. The top second shows, the top section shows the 27 digest compared to the 2018 digest. The second column over shows what the reassessment reassessment values did. It lowered, you know, they actually lowered this year our values of our property in the city limits. Other changes to the taxable digest, which is the gray column, that's how much the city grew in annexations and upbuilding growth. If you go down the page to about, a little below halfway down, you'll see the computation of percentage increase in property taxes. So it's showing a percentage actual decrease of negative .15%. So we advertised, as you remember, last meeting, to keep the millage rate the same. And I'm recommending that you approve the millage rate of 4.655 mills tonight. And we'll go on with our property tax process.
Okay, entertain a motion?
Sorry.
Before you read it, Lonnie, would you take the air conditioning down just a couple of notches? So we don't have to hang me. I've got to quibble again.
Before I interrupted you, you're quibbling first.
Yeah. That's, the rollback is because of the growth.
We're actually not rolling it back. We're keeping it the same.
Okay.
We're not required, if anything, we could, I guess we could have raised it, but we probably have to still call it a property tax increase.
If we have raised the millage rate, it's increased. So we stay the same. We can usually absorb the growth that we have. And we've had several properties built this year, so it should appear on our digest this time or next year.
And these numbers are at 40%. But our, our digest went from 219,877,643 to 238,385,697.
You know, we rolled it back.
And I just want to make sure I understood that correctly.
I don't remember seeing any tax assessors come by our properties to determine that it's not as much, worth as much as it was last year to get those lower assessments. I guess they just sent to us in a mail. With that, Ann, I'll take a motion.
Somebody came by between Moore and Southern Street. I tell you that. Ours was a few, I think.
Yeah.
Appreciate the increase.
I make a motion that we accept the millage rate.
4.655. Is it second? Motion is second. Any further discussion? Being an offer of what was shown hands? Thank you, counsel. With that, our citizens should not experience any increases from last year. Is that right? Especially with 38 million extra of the number that you gave.
It's there.
Unless you got, unless you were one of the fortunate ones.
You will say so.
Do we follow on that? All right, next item. You'll concentrate. Under new business, planning commission report. Robert is not here, so we recognize Jim to explain for item A and B. I'll let you capture both of them at the same time.
On both those items, this was, these are actions taking property currently zoned as commercial and creating a category in that for a planned unit development. The way the ordinance is written, that should be some rural residential agriculture before being categorized as a PUD. We failed to do that. So a city attorney has suggested we take that back to the planning commission, which we've already requested, and then bring it to council after their consideration.
Okay, so we'll be basically going over the same process again, and but we'll be changing it to RA?
RA.
And will this cost the developers? Or will the city will absorb the cost?
I have weighed that cost.
Okay.
Application fee is $325.
Can we change it twice? And will we be able to go RA and a PUD in the same hearing?
Yes.
That's how it's identified in the ordinance. As RA, you can't go from C to, you have to go to RA.
Can't go any, any zoning other than RA to a planned unit development. So I'm requesting we table both items A and B.
Okay. Entertain a motion to table. Got a motion, second? Motion seconded, any further discussion? Being an offer of what was shown hands? Thank you, counsel. Item C, ride-horse university, 2019 fundraiser. Thought we just did that.
I'm going to request Dale Morrissey to present to council.
Thank you very much. Last year? I'm good. How are you? Last year, we had a very successful event in downtown Jasper. It was a fun event, a family-oriented event. And we're looking to have it again March 16th. St. Patrick's Day is on Sunday, so this year we'll have it on Saturday again. It'll be the same format. And I think Chief Love will say we didn't have any issues last year, I don't think. But we're looking forward to it this year. And we're starting the planning process. So I wanted to make sure we got it approved before the planning started.
Is you going to do it on Saturdays till Sunday?
Correct. We'll do it on Saturday afternoon. It'll start.
What do they do in Savannah? Do they do it on Sunday or Saturday?
Yeah, I don't know.
They do it on Halloween.
No, they do it the whole week.
But they still recognize, well, we don't want you to set a precedent that we need to recognize Halloween. It becomes Halloween weekend when you do that.
Well, we will, you know, looking to do it on Saturday afternoon. And last year, we had it in the area. I'm not sure what you call it right there. The green space there in downtown. And we are looking to kind of expand it a little bit. So if we wanted to put it downtown, where you normally have events, with the band will be downtown, right where it usually is, would that be an issue either?
Why not?
Wanted to expand. We want this to be a big family event.
I would think Chief Love would love it. I would think Chief Love would appreciate it. I would, I think that'd be a great idea. I would entertain a motion from council.
Please recognize that Mayor said great idea. I did not.
You're talking about having the band down in the green space?
Oh, have it downtown, downtown. I guess right in front of the courthouses where it normally is set up, in that area.
Yes, yes. We can paint the courthouse green.
We have work coming out yet.
Talking about expanding, would you still use the green space for anything, or would you solely move it?
Probably not. We probably just move downtown, and we're hoping to get more vendors, to have more opportunity for the vendors, and get the merchants involved. You know, this is an opportunity to have people come to downtown Jasper and enjoy downtown, bring their families. So that's what we're looking, and raising money for Reinhardt University for Pickens County students is what we do. We gave over eighteen thousand last year in Pickens County scholarships for students of T U.
We have the owner manager of Wing Solid. You, would you like to say something about, do you think this is a good idea?
I'm bought for it.
That's what I want to hear.
Yeah, we were going to come see you two, you and Bob.
What time are you talking about closing the street?
Probably around five again when we start the walk, and five to eight is what we did last year.
Y'all had a run, a walk.
It was a point five K Shamrock Stroll, and we had about three hundred people walk downtown Jasper. It was fun.
You still going to do that again?
Yes, we're going to make it bigger and better this year. We're going to have three hundred fifty.
Point five K.
Point five K. We'll see everybody there, Mayor's going to wait it.
Yes. Have an almonson stand by. With that, we entertain a motion to approve this request of Reinhardt University's fundraiser downtown Jasper on March 16th, celebrating St. Patrick's Day.
Make a motion.
Out of motion.
I got a motion.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion. Being in all favor, vote with your hands. Thank you, council. And I'll let you work out all the details with Mr. Loeb back there, and we might get the fire department involved.
That's correct. Thank y'all very much.
There'll be an official announcement coming out, and we're very happy to tell you that Dale's agreed to be one of our board of directors for the Chamber of Commerce this year, so we're really excited about that.
We're honored. We're proud to it. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Dale.
I'm a police department vehicle. I haven't been able to look at that. Go back to council.
In general, I mean, on the budget, was it not?
This item is on the 2018 budget, purchase of a vehicle for the police department typically. We hold on to this later in the year to see how the budget's going. As we discussed at the work session Thursday night, there are funds available for this. You've got in your package the quote from Ronnie Thompson, along with the quote for equipment to be added to the vehicle. This is a pursuit pickup truck that's being requested. Go ahead and make your comment.
I was trying to think if it's going to haul cows, dogs, poultry, or what. Now, we entertain a motion, council. I think we discussed this, but entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to purchase the pursuit pickup truck.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion?
Is this the only quote we got, right?
He did obtain other quotes, this was the lowest one.
Any further discussion? Being in all favor, vote with your hands. Thank you, council. Tell what time of year it is, and once a year we get the bad effect.
Thirty-three thousand dollars.
Pardon?
Thirty-three thousand. My brother is.
Item E, historic old jail on Main Street, repair and maintenance. Ms. Loeb?
I believe you have in your package a request from the Historical Society to, for the city of Jasper to possibly participate in some window repairs and porch repairs at the old jail. There is also a request that the city help the removal of a walnut tree and some other trees on the property. Like for council to consider participating in this, and if so, to one extent.
Open the floor. What amount they asked for?
The total amount of the repair was...
Only six hundred dollars? I did not. Was that what they requested?
No, they are requesting participation, but that the city paid certainly not the full amount.
Jim, did we talk about possibly using some city crews to do some of the tree removal?
And with your permission, we'll schedule that and then get it, get the trees down.
Did you get a chance to speak with the commissioner?
Someone that I mentioned that he might want to help the city taking over his jail. Just might be a thought, but actually, we would be participating with the Historical Society, not the county, right, on this.
Is the conversation long term, are they anticipating taking ownership of some of these historical properties, do you know, or they just want to, has he gotten that far along?
I am not sure what their agreement is with the county and not policy about they're going to be moving forward.
Interven a motion.
I would make a motion that we offer to help them with the trees and then see what the long-term plan is before we pass down and see where the county stands as well.
Motion to help with in-kind?
Yeah, with the trees and then see where they're, kind of like they were talking about where they're going and what their long-term goal is, and then try to coordinate it to see where, are they taking it over? Is it the county or, you know, how do we want to proceed with it?
And we mentioned the other night, as well, it would give us time to add any number to our budget.
Budget for next year, yes.
Might give you a good negotiating point with the Historical Society, because they do a lot for that old jail in the city, so we don't want to really not seem accommodated.
Well, and participating in removing the trees is not a small deed. That is, that's going to be an effort.
Maybe maxing the county on some of this historical stuff. I mean, as Mayor pointed out, it is in our town, city, and it just feels like they've come to us, and I don't know that I believe in historical preservation, but it seems like we may max. It's my business.
And it may be something that we can budget for in the future.
And I think their intent is to go to the county for the difference of our participation versus the total cost.
I think I have a motion from Ann that we will provide the in-kind for the tree removal and whatever else you can do to help them. I imagine would be what's your motion as well.
And I think the plan was to use, it's a walnut tree that's being cut down. I believe they're going to use the wood from that in a fundraiser.
Oh, yeah. You did mention that the other time.
Someone who's willing to make some bolt issues.
Would it be possible to add shrubs to that motion? They have mentioned the trees before, they've also mentioned the shrubs, just removing those.
Yeah, and I mean, I make a motion for Jim to make a decision. I mean, he knows what kind of staff he's got and what kind of...
They had discussed shrubs. It's not in the formal request, but we can certainly talk to them about that.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Motion to allow the city manager to work with the Historical Society to provide in-kind as you deem necessary and appropriate. Does that fit you up just right? I got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Being in all favor, vote with your hands. Thank you, council. Pouring license liquor by the drink. We'll let you make all the decisions on that as well. Jim, if you would, present to council what this is saying.
We have had a request from Mr. Capesio, who is with us tonight, to consider lowering the fee for liquor license included in your package. You know, Mr. Capesio, if you want to come up, included in your package tonight is a list of current license holders, beer, wine, alcohol, the ones with a star to the left of their names have the liquor license. That was requested at Thursday night's meeting, so I wanted to be able to add it to your package. You've also got some information that Tara and Lisa were able to put together about fees charged by cities surrounding Jasper.
Carl, may I? Carlos stopped by my office after the workshop, what day was that workshop?
The 26th, right?
Yeah, okay, I didn't remember when it was exactly. It might have been last month, but he stopped by and, it's pretty hard to sell me, I can't be sold, but he was explaining to me how by lowering, the city was going to make more. So I'll let you explain that to council.
How many licenses was there actually, liquor, not beer and wine?
Five.
Was five, okay. Right, that's what we discussed.
Yes, it's like liquor theory.
All right, so the license is three thousand dollars for the liquor by the drink. So you have five, just on Main Street, along Woodbridge, who I believe had a license, gave it up. Sixty-one May, who I think originally had a license, gave it up because of the cost of it. And myself, New York Pizza, you have Johnny's Pizza, you have Last Catch, there's six right there that don't have liquor by the drink. If you cut the license in half and five of those six got the license, you'd be at break even, exactly where you are right now. You'd also have five more licenses collecting three percent liquor tax every month. And I wouldn't make it a permanent thing, but just, it might be something that might attract people to come to the downtown area a little more often. And as soon as it gets, it starts going, maybe a couple of years, increase the license. But if you take a liquor by the drink, everybody just seems to think that liquor by the drink is, you're making millions of dollars, and you're really not. You know, so if you break it down, it really comes out to about sixteen, seventeen drinks a week that you have to sell, just to break even. And that's if you have a perfect world where nobody's overpouring or spilling or anything. Okay, so that's just to break even on three thousand. So if you triple that, that brings you six thousand dollars a year. And I really don't want to take the liability for six thousand dollars a year, because when you break that down weekly, what are you talking about, a hundred and seventy-three dollars, two hundred dollars a week profit on it? So to make it where somebody's wild, to have that license, the initial outlay of the license is three thousand. If you cut it in half, I think it would benefit everybody. Because I would think that you would get five more licenses.
Well, we approved the pouring of distilled spirits back in the early, mid-nineties. We were one of the first cities along 515 that adopted that. And, but what we did, looking back on it in retrospect, is we adopted it, but we've priced ourselves out of the market as well, obviously, by all those businesses not holding the license. So that's my position on it, council. I think you can see Carlos's approach to this, and it scares me when he told me this, it kind of makes sense to me, so.
At least, at least I spoke about it once with Jim, that you can't single out one area and give them a coverage, because I guess that's...
That would be wrong.
His state wouldn't allow it, and I understand that, so that's why I might go about it as well, as long as the city is not losing money.
Did you have an opportunity to speak to the other restaurants to see if they would be interested in going along with?
I have spoke with New York Pizza, I spoke with him. I haven't spoken with Sixty-one or Woodbridge, or Johnny's, or Last Catch. But I did speak with New York Pizza. I think New York, I love New York Pizza, sent me a letter too, didn't they?
I have not seen it. I understood they were...
They said they were going to, I guess they didn't, but I thought they were going to be here tonight too. But I have spoke with that, the two owners there. They would like, they would definitely do it.
We have seven fifty for the beer, seven fifty for the wine, which is fifteen hundred, and then three thousand for the distilled spirits. So you're saying three hundred, seven fifty for the beer, seven fifty for the license, and fifteen hundred, which would be a total of three thousand dollars for the package.
Right.
Okay. Instead of five thousand, it would be five thousand otherwise.
Right.
Okay. Bill, you have your issue, we, this is just the price in our ordinance. Do we have to change the ordinance?
Y'all got a price to do if you want to do that.
We don't take a change to the ordinance, just a change to it. Yeah, we'll... We change it.
We change it twice.
And what makes this a special time, we are now preparing these licenses, applications to be mailed out to folks currently holding them.
Yeah, I think by November first.
Jim, can you reach out to the owners without a hook for us to do and see if, obviously you can't hold accountable...
Right.
...to doing what they say, but right now we're, we've got one interesting part of here, others that said they are, but we haven't heard from them. And I know that a couple of those organizations let their licenses drop for specific reasons, not because of the cost of the license. At least two of those I know did that, and... Get a little more for much.
I certainly do that. We're looking at five, we determine that five has a liquor license, so the distilled spirit.
Five have, yeah.
So...
You'd have to have five more to break even.
That counts, not accounted for the excise tax revenue that we'll be bringing from that.
Right, because the other factor, if you add a five more, then...
I think the only downturn is that, again, the Jasper City Council promoting drunkenness and wildness in the city, and I'm sure we'll get some feedback from that, but the whole idea is just to make the restaurants more profitable in the city so that we can do the things that we planned for years. That would be prosper.
Because I don't, I don't, I don't see myself being open at nine o'clock, even with a liquor license. I think it's just a convenience for folks that might want to stay at the downtown area but want to have a cocktail with dinner rather than a beer or wine. I randy, drinkery, in can, and that is not my intention, because I get sick and tired of babysitting adults. And so, and the liability increases too, you know. But I think that I've had a lot of my customers ask me about it, and...
And the order still holds you responsible to not allow anyone to...
Correct. My responsibility, correct. I have to know where to cut off periods and not over-serve, and serve my servers.
So I mean, we're not, the city is not getting rich with five liquor licenses.
No, they're not, and they will make a little more money if they're more five more with the three percent.
Okay, we're at October now, by the time we come back next month with the workshop, come back October, November, we read November, December, it's going to go running in January trying to renew at the new rates.
Yeah, I've got a real timing issue.
It is.
And I don't know, is it possible?
That we can refund?
We can refund? Collect the full amount now and refund.
That would be a council prerogative.
Sure, nobody would be upset with a refund.
If we did, so we don't hold up the license process.
Would that be an issue to do that, Bill?
It would be odd.
Yeah. I think y'all have your ordinance applied before you send out Dale. And you could have a special meeting.
We may have a need for a special meeting concerning the planned unit developments anyway.
Okay, if it don't happen, it don't happen, which is the best we can do.
Right.
You got us thinking about it, isn't it?
I'm just, try and bring more business to Main Street. I think there's a lot of different committees that are pulling in all different directions, and nobody's working with each other. I don't know that anybody's working with the council, and some of them work with the chamber, but I think you've got...
Half of this council... Half of this council, the chamber, or three quarters, five, four fills of it is.
Well, but my point is that there's this merchant group, that merchant group, and it doesn't seem to be any direction on where we're going with the downtown area. So I don't, I don't ever know when any of those meetings are, and I'd rather speak to, because ultimately, whatever we do comes down to you guys right here. And I think that I'd like to know, you know, if I could be of any help, it only benefits me. I'd see some growth in downtown. I mean, there, you know, there's a lot of people that bypass us and go right up to L.J. and Blue Ridge, and then on the other side of that is, I drive out West Church and I hit five fifteen to make a left to go south, I look to my right and there's a giant come to Cornersville, which kind of takes me off.
We have the same sign in Cornersville.
Yeah, I don't think we did.
Carlos, why don't you, Amberly and Robert Keller are eating your restaurant, I think, pretty.
Yes.
Amberly's currently our director of our chamber. Why don't you talk to her about what you just said?
Yeah, I've spoken to her a little bit on it, and like I said, I think that we have to stop having so many different groups and just have.
We actually have a, we do have a plan that we're working on from the chamber's perspective, and there are a lot of groups, and those groups are actually working with the chamber as well, so. Not to run you out of here, we're glad to have you, but that's where a lot of the action, where the rubber's going to meet the road, so.
Because I really don't think the answer, a lot of times I go to the streets, I don't think the answer is shutting Main Street down all the time.
Would you like to address that?
Yeah, I would, because I think that, I think, I mean, on Jeep Fest and Marvel Fest, it's a different, different animal altogether, but listen, I like the car shows, I like the old cars, but to tell you the truth, when you shut Main Street down on a Saturday for the car show, I die. My business just goes into tank. And I don't, I think a lot more people would participate to visit the car show if Main Street is not shut down. And whether you keep the cars on Main Street or put them, I know John from Progress said he would have no problem with them using part of his lot that's over there, or another lot that he's just purchased possibly, but I don't think that's necessary. I think just leave the cars on Main and just leave Main open, because people are not going to park all the way down and walk in. They're just not going to walk in when the Main Street shut down to come eat or look at the cars. So I think there's enough time when the cars start pulling into the park that it's allowed. There's plenty of spots where they get doesn't make, where they want to put their cars, and then leave Main Street open.
There's not, but two places open on Saturday.
Yeah, there isn't, but what it does is, I'm one of them.
You're one of them, yeah.
And it absolutely kills me.
Yeah, Drew.
You know, I'll be having a great Saturday afternoon, and then come car show time, I'm dead.
It's on the dollar.
And I don't think cheap would mind if you shut the street down.
I'm sure.
I'm sure.
This, I just think the car show would be a lot more successful without shutting the street down, and I know for sure it would help me. And we have one of the best Main Streets out of all of them, L.J., Canton, Woodstock, Blue Ridge. We have so much parking, and then we're just throwing it away and wasting it.
Let me talk to the restaurants at the event and identify this potential holders of liquor license, and I can report that to you all via email.
That'd be big. And talk to the guy that's doing the car show for Carlos as well, because our goal is not to bring anybody's business, and I know it's not theirs. And we've been down this road so many times, and over my term as an office, and these gentlemen and ladies love to back in the Main Street, and it's a perfect time of day because the sun's going behind the buildings. You put them up in the, in the parking lot, they roast, and we've, I've looked at everything going down around to the depot in that area. They love Main Street, and I thought it was sort of, I thought it was successful when they backed in and traffic moved through, but I, they weren't happy with that. So we went back to this, hoping it was not going to hurt your business. So that's between you, the council, and Mr. Looney, and I'll be happy to watch the show because I've been through this already.
Right. I think that, I think they're better off on Main Street too, without Main Street shut. They really do. The deal looks nice, they're well lined up, hood's open, people are dropping, even people that are just passing through.
Are they doing a band or anything now?
They used to do DJ, I don't know that they did the last time.
Okay.
But I just think people passing through, you see all these hoods open, that weren't even coming to the car show, might now pull in and stop them off around.
About how many do they have?
Um, I don't, I don't know the exact, I'd be guessing if I said ten or fifteen, I'm not sure.
It fluctuates.
Yeah, it does, and then they had that one special car show going back quite a while ago. Was it a specialty car show that they had?
Yes, yes. These sports cars.
Yeah, it was, it was a lot more cars, it was a lot of different cars, and it was, I forgot who put it on, but that was fairly successful, and it ditched the street down on that one. But that was a big car show that did a lot of promotion and advertising that they were going to be there that weekend, and it, and it just wasn't a good, successful show.
It was good, it wasn't?
It was, it was.
Your business, your business, the whole idea is to have your business be enhanced by the adventure, not detrimental.
And not to sound selfish, but.
It's not selfish, it's called trying to stand business.
Right, exactly. So, but on the other hand, that's why I like Jasper, because, you know, you guys are very accessible. I don't think I could do this.
With that, I'm going to appoint Kurt Ratfield as a comedian woman to work with you and the merchants and the car show people to see if we can come up with a recommendation for council. Because council could say, yes, we're closing no we want, it comes from here, so you're right.
Carlos, how many days of work are you up?
Six.
You're up to six days a week.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm just sitting here thinking, this gentleman's up six days a week on Main Street, and we're trying to thrive on Main Street. Car show comes to town ten or fifteen times a year. I think we're kind of, I think we kind of need to listen to this man and do whatever we can to help, to help his business.
Well, you still got time to talk to the people or something. Okay. You want to on the committee?
No.
I appreciate you being happy, but Tony, I think you do a good job.
I want to see, see if you're beneficial to everyone, and I think more.
Kurt, you're going to give your show.
It's a good show.
Tony, just be on the committee board, I mean, I'll give you two, you'll get to find out what's going on.
Okay.
All right, thank you. We'll get, well, that's for reporting next, council meeting. Thank you, Carlos.
You'd like to say Patrick's date, then too.
You got to, you got to pay attention, so you want a menu that you have car show going to take place or not?
Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, have a good one.
Yeah, I guess that'll go to old business pouring license. If we don't hear funding for that now, may the council meet in?
Yes, it will, and you will hear something from that.
Item G, city tax exemptions, Lisa?
Currently, we have the home state exemptions of three thousand dollars and a home state exemption for citizens sixty-five years and older of four thousand dollars. And I need approval from council to continue the city tax exemptions.
Entertained a motion?
So.
Got a motion to approve? Second. Motion to second, discussion. Be it on paper vote by your hands, thank you, council. And item H, GDOT decorative signal mask arms. Jim?
Included in your package is a quote from World Fiber Technologies. This is fifty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-three cents additional cost for decorative poles on Southern D Boulevard, and then we're talking about light poles and Main Street, using the decorative poles to match what we have in the rest of the city.
Be a duplicate to the ones on Burn Mountain and Victory.
So there's two per intersection, and each of them has three arms, right?
Two arms.
Two arms, I believe.
Okay, two arms. Yeah, that's right.
And the ones going in L.J., Blue Ridge, they would be, they would just be aluminum color?
I have no idea what they're doing out there.
As long as that what, there's going to be a standard, just a mask arm?
If we don't, if the city does not purchase the decorative mask arms, then they will be an aluminum color, some kind of metal like that.
Their stock.
Right.
Yeah, that's what they would be, but I don't know if L.J. isn't doing something decorative or.
Where's L.J.'s going?
I don't know.
I know Blue Ridge is getting two. It's not my job, but anyway, with that, we entertain a motion, this will be funding with SLOST.
And as you want to say, yes, thank you for mentioning that, this would be in the SLOST account.
Entertain a motion. A motion to approve? Got a motion in second. Discussion.
It does include the pedestrian crossing signs or lights?
The others have, we're assuming that these do too, well, Kurt.
That wouldn't have anything to do with the decorative, because they.
No, the reason I said they don't, I guess they match.
Get run over. But that would be, yeah, they don't make those matches, they usually get hit three times a week, so it's not really safe to stand on a pedestrian walking down.
Get out of the way quickly.
Any further discussion?
Sign and say that.
Be it on paper vote by your hands, thank you, council.
I will let the vendor know. There is a twenty-two to twenty-four week lead time on this equipment.
Okay, item I, four-way stop, Old Federal and Philadelphia Lane. Jim?
Council, we discussed this at our September fifth meeting, and there were some concerns that council maybe needed to go look at the area, so we put it off till old business on, well, we didn't make it old business, we made it new.
Well, I was going to bring that to our attention, I thought we'd just handle this new business again.
And it's no problem. Just to be, just to be considered, this is something that was requested by one of the business owners in the area. He called today to follow up on it and asked me to call someone who had been in an accident on that road and showed interest in it.
I thought he might be here tonight. We called him.
He calls.
Stanley called him, he is away. Transference, we're going to tell who he is, but if he wants to call us, we'll tell him.
So the accident was at this.
At this intersection, yes.
And this, this is the intersection where you have the industrial strip going down to Confederate Avenue as well as going the other direction of Philadelphia Lane?
Philadelphia Lane, Philadelphia, Old Philadelphia.
I almost got hit there Sunday.
You had that?
Well, I almost got hit, it is very dangerous, I agree. Sorry, I know, I tried to raise my hand.
I'm sorry, you're out of your.
I'm out of order, I raised my hand.
Unless you got hit, you're out of order.
Only I'll hit you.
Go ahead, Jim, we'll recognize Mary in just a second.
Again, this is for council's consideration.
Council, of course, that street has, Philadelphia has three intersections, more intersections than that, but three with stop signs, but this one truly is, it's the only one we have in the city. Actually, we don't, we have Noah Drive that actually comes out in the city with the developments that are taking place. There's going to be problems there one of these days as well, but.
The other three on Philadelphia.
Man the city, yeah.
They're on county road, not a city road.
But this, this intersection, you don't supposed to put stop signs in by state regulations to control speed. Is that correct, Greg? You've heard them say that, but you can do it for life safety reasons, and this, trying to get out of Confederate Avenue at twelve o'clock with all the employees that work down that area creates quite an experience, if you've not experienced that. They need some way to get out, because they're just jumping down the traffic. Now, Mary, you want to rectify your.
Well, I was at Tater Page, and that's why I was saying, if you're trying to come out from Tater Page and turn left, you cannot see those people at all coming from that way. That's where I almost got hit.
And that's because of the sign. If you address the sign.
We're working on the sign too.
Okay. The distance, site distances is an issue as well, but this would not only need stop signs, but it would need some type of attention that there's a stop sign ahead, sign as well, to let people, maybe a rumble strip or something, because most people think they can pull out, and they're really a leg.
Greg, do you have any input on it?
It is a bad intersection, Peter over there to Hatties, and it is tough, like Mary said. It's a little muddy, I think.
I would make a motion that we add stop sign on Confederate and Old Philadelphia with rumble strips.
Have a motion to approve the four-way intersection at Confederate, Old Confederate, or Confederate, Old Philadelphia and Philadelphia Lane by John Faust. Put that to record. The second, got a motion in second, Kurt, or discussion. Be it on, all paper vote by your hands. Thank you.
We're not going to worry about the funding of that either, we're just going to do that. If we can pull that one. I believe our financial director.
I don't hand that, we'll take that.
You just go do that.
With that being, with that being said, our next item is item J. Dave, if you want to come up and join Jim?
Mayor, council. Got some new sign.
I think they're going to like it.
I'll give it anyway.
Okay. Got a new sign there. Good evening, mayor, council. We have actually got to a place where we'll be able to move forward, whatever will permit. We're going from one MGD to E to one point three three MGD.
The well sign?
Yes, which is an extra three hundred and thirty-three thousand gallons a day.
Sounds familiar.
For a cost.
Strange, isn't it?
That we, EPD actually recognized the attempt by the city council to lower their unaccounted for water, where y'all hired an outside fire match point to come in and do a complete audit and leak detection of the city water lines. And they were, that was the main thing, I think, that got it more than anything was us bringing in an outside fire to do it. A lot of people try to say that they do it themselves or whatever, but, you know, who knows? But they were not. And that package that.
Fans spent forty-eight thousand dollars to do that good thing.
Yeah, they were, they were very impressed, they were impressed we were going to do some more this year, some more leak detection. And the bill department, Jim, come up with some areas of growth that are possibly coming in, and they seen that, so Mr. Frashaw from EPD City, I'll go ahead and, you know, allow it most of the time. We were talking about years of unaccounted for, they seen the need of the city to have this, so, yeah, really, I mean, I know it's a part of the many things, but we got three hundred and thirty-three thousand gallons extra every day for two thousand dollars.
Okay, so the letter says, withdrawal permit number one-one-two-dang-zero-zero-zero-two. Dear Mr. Weaver, the water supply program of the Georgia Environmental Protection Division, EPD, has enclosed the above drafted groundwater withdrawal permit. EPD is prepared to recommend the draft permit to the director for approval after a public notice period thirty-plus days from posting. If you agree with the conditions of the permit, please complete and sign at the appropriate place below and return this letter to the EPD by October the fifth, two thousand and eighteen. Please make any corrections and return to sign the draft permit signature page as an email attachment. Please make any corrections and return to sign the draft permit signature page as an email attachment. Mr. Fashet, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact. I'm not, I'm trying to pronounce that. We only got four days left. We're gonna hand deliver this?
I'm gonna email it.
I think we need, I think we need to study this before we accept...
Well, and the strange thing is, it was just received this afternoon.
We entertain a motion to approve David's efforts and Mr. Luna's efforts and proceeded to get the permit increased? Motion to approve? Motion and second, discussion? Been none on paper vote by show hands? Thank you, Council, thank you, David, thank you, Council.
Where's the stake is due, David? Where will the stake is due?
The bill will be two point three-three, and with the meeting that we had with the county the other day, uh, myself, Mayor, Jim, and Lonnie, hopefully we'll be able to include some of that water whenever they're not running the plant, bringing it to us, and we'll be, and before they get the plant built, that Jim run there the other day.
We are asking, uh, Chris, Chris Oje, Oje? To look into, uh, the city being able to withdraw three hundred and thirty-three thousand off of the county's permit now and process that water. So this gets us to two thirty-three, though?
Yes. Yes.
Irrespective of the county's law?
Yeah, no matter what.
Okay, yes. We've almost decreased our ability to treat water almost four percent.
But exoneratively, I think we're only...
Move forward on it.
You tell about our...
Lisa, we'll type that for you. Just type for print. Thank you, David. Finance report, Lisa?
In your packet, you have a finance report for, uh, September of eighteen. Uh, and the general fund, we collected a hundred and seventy thousand, a hundred and seventy-two dollars in uh, local option sales tax for a total of nine hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred for the year. Uh, that compares with a total of eight hundred and fifty-four thousand nine sixty-three last year. It looks like our, and I may have gone over this before, it looks like we're really below budget in our revenue, but that is because in the total annual budget is the proceeds for the fire truck, and we've not booked that at this time, so that's why it said, it would be around seventy-three percent if we got this booked. Hotel Motel, I was gonna say we're about to cut a check to the chamber, end of, end of another quarter, it'll be approximately fifteen thousand. Um, just for this quarter. In the SPOSH fund, we collected eighty thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars for the month, and year-to-date, that's seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and six dollars, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Uh, our cash at this point, right, right now, and we, this is counting that we've spent money on our strapping already, we're cutting a check probably this week, uh, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and seven dollars is what we'll have after we cut that check. And I put, um, in your packet, a, a spreadsheet for the whole year on SPOSH to concede where the money has gone. And there's also in your packet, the checks over five thousand dollars that we, that we spent this month. Um, and water fund, we're running pretty close to budget. A little under in the revenues, a little low, uh, well, right under still in the expenditures, and I just was gonna make a note that I budget for a profit in the, in the water fund to cover note payments and our principal, which, as you know, we account for, water fund as a, as an enterprise fund, and it's not like a general fund, which is more cash-based, but the principal is chosen on the balance sheet, the principal payment. So we are a little under budget with our net profit. Uh, I budgeted for a hundred and nineteen thousand, a hundred and seventy dollar profit, and we are at thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and nineteen. If that makes sense?
Yes, but I learned a long time ago in politics and water, you don't call it profit, you call it revenue.
Revenue over expenses.
We can't use, we can't use retained revenue in water, we use that in the general fund more, although we're not... You know, like if you say profit, your taxpayer is gonna come find you.
Well, I'm just trying to explain that that profit is used for principal payments, it's, it's part of the cash flow.
Yes, 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 yes. Revenue above expenses.
That's all, that's all I have.
With, with that, we're gonna have to plan for the wastewater treatment if we move in that direction, so uh, if we move, we're gonna have to move. Did we get feedback on that recently?
Uh, I don't think it actually did, uh, nothing huge before two thousand twenty. Will be in this fixed budget here.
Okay, with that being said, this, that, that's the thing that keeps bothering me down the line, is the growth of the wastewater plant. Anything else?
That's all I have.
I'm sorry, I threw a lucky wrench in the budget discussion or the finance. Questions, Council, about the finance? Okay, thanks, Lisa. Uh, roads and other reports? They've been hanging today.
Okay, Mayor, Council, uh, on the completion of the stripping, they still lacked, uh, some stop bars, one crosswalk, and one center line on Richard Street. They came up and started working on this after lunch today. And they just called me just a minute ago, and, uh, they were gonna finish tonight and be done with all the stripping, and one of the old cylinders on their truck busted, actually busted. So they're headed back to Carlsville right now, and they're gonna get parts and fix that and be back tomorrow to fix whatever they didn't get done tonight.
Council had enough to look at this strike?
I, I have a, a kind of business on approximately about the side streets with a parallel parking.
Yeah.
We, I think we've stripped them to state standards, is that right?
Yes.
State and city.
Sort of to...
State and city.
And they're, they're really concerned because of course now our vehicles leave the trucks for longer than what they were back years ago, they're actually hanging over front and back, and they're kind of concerned with that.
The, the size of all parking spaces according to state standards is nine by eighteen. So they're eighteen feet long if they're parallel or if they're horizontal, either way. Uh, so they're eighteen feet long and they're nine feet wide.
Any other questions, Council? I, I've got my pet peeve. I was coming down Spring Street, and they have boogered it up. They have, it looked like they have overs, looked like they fuzzed. We won't, for the money we're paying, please tell them we won't sharp distinct lines like a real big city, big boy pants. We told them that the last time. And I'm sure I heard a key from this, because they, they, they don't look good.
We haven't used this carpet.
Well, they, they may be there last time, they need to correct that before they go back to Carlsville. Yeah, if that sign tells them how to get to Carlsville, that, that needs, they, we can hold this check, because this does not need to be paid. I could do better with a spray can.
Yeah, they've kind of, they've crossed the lines over and done it twice.
Yeah. And, and coming in right into the traffic light, uh, this need be straight lines and, and no overflow. There, there, you know, the last time, I think it's Peach State that did the last one, uh, when we, they came back to bring Peach... Yeah, Park. Uh, see what you do on that, and tell them that, they actually got called out in the council meeting. Now, you got called, you get paid on one of them.
The, uh, mask arms for the traffic lights, uh, I was in a meeting this morning with the DOT C man. Uh, he did not have any information on it, I, I brought it to his attention that they were supposed to start the foundations and everything, September the fifteenth. He indicated that he would find out where they're at. They didn't say which county they're gonna start in or which city they're gonna start in.
We got it.
So, uh...
What'd you say the lead time was? Twenty, uh, twenty-two to twenty-four weeks.
Let's see, they could go ahead, I mean, and they probably are, they may have started in Fanning County, I don't know. But, uh, he was just gonna find out and give us some information, so that we know when they're gonna do food and whatever.
And, and it is gonna be a state's project, they're gonna do all the foundation work in three counties, then come back and do something. If I could, if you could, Lonnie and Jim, who you been working with, Carl?
Uh, no, uh, Mr. Carver Road.
Call him, tell him to send you some type of confirmation, uh, that we're gonna get our decorative streetlights, because I can see them showing up with aluminum, and we're sitting here with what we've had, and we, we wanna go the other route. Please get some type of confirmation that they know what we want, because they will mess it up.
We are working with the contractor, we've got these closed doors, so...
But something in right...
There's some comfort level there.
Okay, because they will mess it, because they already forgot it once, so, so, just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, uh, the brush on five fifteen from Philadelphia Road, I've been constant contact with DOT, we've been, people have been contacting me, wanting to know why. They come up there and cut trees down and left of land from Philadelphia Road North, but yet Yammer County, Fanning County was cleaned up. There was an issue with the group that was cutting it down, they lost the contract.
They different contract that they're on, nowhere from.
Right, a couple weeks ago, they had a signed the contract with another crew. They come up here and work from Philadelphia Road out to Appalachian Court, and now they've lost that contract. So it may be December before we have a crew out there finish cleaning it up.
Looking better.
But the DOT is working on it. Um, today, the paint crew has put a right turn arrow on the, right behind Jasper Drugstore. They painted a new arrow there, right turns to when you pulling out into fifty-three.
Straight and right, huh? Is it fuzzy or is it crisp?
I, I don't know, I couldn't do some practice, but I didn't see. Uh, the, in the conversation this morning, the big project, uh, there's a possibility that's being postponed to two thousand and twenty-two now.
Imagine that.
The last time I talked to you, they said it was two thousand and twenty. But according to the DOT gentleman, it's possible, it's not definite, but it's very possible. And sorry I'm late, but I was actually out at Top Trump, working on easement that we desperately needed. If David can meet with me in the morning, I think we have that easement lined up, and if so, it's gonna save the city between ten and fifteen thousand dollars. So we'll go out in the morning, and then we'll work on that.
Questions, Council?
Um, any update on our street signs?
The street signs, the fellows have been working on that whenever they weren't mowing grass or doing whatever needs to be done. Uh, I think there's about thirty that still has to be put up, and I'm working on my next order to have it ordered and get them here. Uh, the street department has indicated to me that they will work on and get them up as quick as possible, and, but they've been doing so many other jobs too. But, uh, they said if nothing happened after grass, if they didn't get caught up beforehand, as soon as they, the grass slowed down, which should be in the near future, that they would concentrate on that issue and get it taken care of.
How many do we have all up?
Oh, I'd have to wait a minute.
I'm just curious.
I mean, we got a lot of it, but I mean, but I...
This is third order or fourth?
This, this is the third order that's in the shop down there. And they, you know, I ordered like, uh, nearly seventy in this order. And they're, they, they put them up, and I think there's about thirty-something left or something out of this order.
Questions, Council? Council, before we move forward with the police sheet, next month is election. Excuse me, maybe should have, come on up, we're not gonna throw anything at you. We need to determine where we're gonna meet. This room will be used for elections.
We're gonna hold the meeting, I can go across the road and, uh...
I think, I think we'll need to meet in, because we've been pushed anyway, we don't even bump it back any. So if you could, just cross the street.
I'll obtain the location across the street.
Council, if you will panel the tech school, unless you're here or otherwise, but you'll be okay. That, that good Lisa, Lisa gave me that little note. Thank you, ma'am.
By the way, it should be recognized that this is Mr. Love, Chief Lovell's birthday today. Yes, it is.
Every seven years, he gets to be here.
Y'all, y'all got my fifties, one of the Marvel Festival two years ago.
But you took the truck, that one, you got a truck, didn't you?
I did. But he didn't get for Vino's, but it's free.
That means Steve's a lot better for it.
Yeah, you still make it out.
Carlos is still open.
I'll, I'll pay for it.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Jasper Police Department for the month of September responded to nine hundred and sixty-eight calls from the 911, responded to fifty-seven motor vehicle accidents, issued a total of one hundred and eighty-three citations for the following, one hundred and forty-five for speeding, three seat belts, one reckless driving, one uninsured motorist, twenty-four missing language violations, five suspended or revoked, and four for unlawful use of, uh, wireless device, that's taxiing and driving. Georgia State Patrol issued seventy-nine...
What's the fine for that?
It's not much.
Taxiing on drive?
Huh?
First offense is fifty, second's one hundred, third's one fifty. Respectively, we appoint them license.
Habitual bother.
And you get points on your license as well, so. State Patrol issued seventy-nine citations for grand total of two hundred and sixty-two in city court. Issued a total of twenty-three state warrants for the following, one for ordering and prowling, five for obstruction, one felony obstruction, one speeding, one fleeing and attempting to elude felony, reckless driving, battery to maintain lane, two theft by taking felony, one theft by taking misdemeanor, criminal trespass misdemeanor, family violence, uh, simple battery family violence misdemeanor, one disorderly conduct, interference from 911 call misdemeanor, possession of methamphetamine felony, crossing a guard line with illegal drugs felony, aggravated assault felony, sexual battery misdemeanor, and one possession of a firearm by convicted felon, felony. Missing call, applying to the fifty-four, alarm calls, twelve, uh, eighteen disorderly, thirteen erratic, thirteen trespassing or ordering, eighty-one suspicious activity calls, twenty-five domestic investigation, one burglary.
Questions, Council?
I heard there's a commotion down online in the street over the weekend, was there traffic stop or something, where a bunch of guys had to show up?
Could have been, okay.
Make, make them all over.
What, two hundred and...
Sixty-two there. People were texting me, I'm like, I'm great, you know?
It could have been the sheriff's office, it could have been us.
Nothing, nothing major over the weekend.
So are you ready for Saginaw?
Yes, sir. There was a, they, kind of a thing, we had a young man possessing a firearm, we actually locked him up in a car chase in Gordon County, but he, uh, we don't know if y'all heard, we had a shooting at Dunn's North, but he actually shot himself. He had the gun, went off in his pants, and then went to the hospital, I was, and then... Obviously, we took warrants, and then he knew he had warrants, and so he got in a chase for Gordon County, but I think he's in Davidson County Jail as we speak, so up here in the shooting, it was a, it was something, they could act as well, or make, or shoot.
Come on, if you never have a gun, you're pulling your chain. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Chief Rob?
I'm gonna tell any of them for...
See, I come like watching. Mayor, Council, for the month of September, City's Fire Department responded to a hundred and twenty-two emergencies. Those were one structure fire inside the city, one outside, two vehicle fires inside, none outside, one grass fire in, one out. fires inside, none outside, one grass fire in, one out, seven motor vehicle accidents with injuries, three outside, 47 emergency medical responses inside, 32 outside the city, 19 other calls in, eight out, so the end of the month, it was 1,038 calls. Fire inspection lifted four sets of plans and conducted 18 inspections.
I S O?
I S O has come and gone, wasn't anything officially for another month, maybe more, I think we did okay. We had everything you asked for, so we got max points on the trucks and the equipment. David helped me out tremendously with the water system, and I won't have a clue until I officially hear from him, it could take as much as a month, maybe longer, maybe two, I have no idea. I think we did okay.
We're presently at a class?
We're five.
We're going to four?
My goal is a four, yes. We were inspected or audited by the state of Georgia on our training records and whatnot, and that, so...
What would that mean if we went to four?
A decrease in everybody's homeowners insurance.
So we're pulling for you.
Yeah, so it keeps money in your pocket for me to lower that number.
So we just thought you'd be a truck.
Which is, which is a plus, too, that we handle, very, very native.
Well, we're gonna be here on, obviously, this...
I don't blame you on that.
What is the truck status?
Truck, I did inspection in Ohio, it is currently at Williams Fire Apparatus in Alabama, which is outside of Talladega. Couple of trucks ahead of it, have equipment mounted early, and it started Wednesday, October 10th, with the equipment mounted, and that'll take up to a week, but no longer. Should have it at Jasper, probably by the 17th, maybe, of October, and it'll be delivered in a hurry, so, but I'll keep you up that way.
Your guys excited about it?
Yeah, we did, yeah, oh, we did.
That's good.
Questions, council?
Open burning, apply online, what we did in the last year?
The open burn, yes.
That starts today?
Starts today, and you can do it online, it's crazy simple now. We actually do it on the phone, it's the easiest thing, but your, your cell phone number becomes your permanent number.
What's the number you call?
Uh, 1-800-OK-TO-BURN.
I said, I said, what's the number? 1-800, say that for the camera.
OK-TO-BURN.
Say two as a numeral?
Two as a numeral, OK, the number two, burn. I don't know that, they're...
Still, there's lipstick, camera.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Safe.
1-800-OK-TO-BURN.
They can copy our...
About five or nine.
Maybe there's two cameras, so...
There you go, thank you, did that. You picked it up, didn't you? We don't want to make him do that again.
I don't want it.
I didn't want you to be shy from what Mr. Lovell did for you, so. Anything else you got to ask?
Nope.
Questions, council? Thank you, Steve. Thank you. John, you have any J Y S A news, football's going away, children's, my other competition coming up next month? Kids are busy, and they're playing down at the high school, right?
High schools, great. Coach Parker's really been up.
Really helped us out with that. You did. And no other business coming for the council, we're gonna take a motion to adjourn.